Our first item on the agenda is 1.0, and that is our roll call. Dana?
Melinda Dolez.
Here.
Pat Trusco.
Here.
Louise Heinz.
Here.
Simi Petneyak.
Here.
Katie Schwartz is absent. Eric Tesmer is absent. Sharon Van Leer.
Here. Next, please rise for 2.0, our pledges of allegiance.
..................................................................
Next, we have 3.0, and that is the approval of our agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved on?
Moved by Melinda. Seconded by Pat. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Next is 4.0, and that is our workshop items. 4.1 is a professional development update, which will be introduced by our assistant superintendent, Kelly Jensen.
Good evening, and I am excited here to officially welcome Mark to our district. I don't know that Mark has presented formally, maybe as part of a group, but Mark is our director of professional development, and this is a busy time for Mark. We have been working very hard in the last couple of weeks as our staff prepare to come back, and a lot of the program you're going to see in the next couple of weeks is all because of this person right here. So he's going to give us an overview of what's happening in the next few weeks, and then a little bit of foreshadowing for the year. And I think one thing that we're really excited about is the strategic plan and where we're headed with that, and how that is just really going to guide some coherence in our professional development. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Kelly. Can you hear me okay? Is this set up all right? Thank you.
Press that. Make sure it's green. It's green.
Good.
Means he's in outer space.
Hang on. Thank you. Okay. We'll try this again. Thank you, Kelly, for the introduction. I really appreciate it. Superintendent Nielsen and Chair Van Leer and school board members, thank you for the time to share the information about all of the purposeful planning we've been doing in teaching and learning, really probably since about January 1st onward into the spring and then through the summer months. So I'm excited to share a number of pieces with you tonight. I think the first point that I'd like to make is how important alignment is in professional development and professional learning in general. At the risk of offending any people from Wisconsin here, the row the boat notion of the University of Minnesota and the idea that rowing the boat, everybody needs to row the boat in the same direction so that we're really working towards one clear goal, I think that really is a nice metaphor for schools and school systems as well, because we really do have limited resources, scarce resources, and we need to use them very wisely. So I think that with our new strategic plan, it provides us an awesome opportunity to make sure that we are lean and targeted in our professional development towards our strategic priorities. So personally speaking, I'm really excited to be now one year into the district, to be able to really think about professional learning through the lens of our strategic plan. And we have some research available to us in the field of education to know what we should be focusing on. So those two things combined, a clear strategic plan, goals and vision with research, and we're set up for success. So you might say, well, what type of research? Well, when we start talking about high instructional practices, we know what works in schools and in classrooms. One of my favorite keynoter across the country right now is named Weston Kishnick, and he says beware of cool right. Sometimes school systems, we really get excited about the flashy object, but we have to make sure that we use our time really wisely in our classroom because we know what moves the needle in terms of student achievement. And we have that research available to us, so let's make sure we have a clear focus. If you don't mind just advancing there. So we have our strategic priorities that we keep in mind when we're designing our learning. Specifically, we've really spent a lot of time on the strategic priorities. And what does that work look like? What does it feel like? What does it sound like in our classrooms? We have data that can guide our decisions on the site level and the district level of what we should be focusing on. And you'll see in this presentation, obviously, one of our biggest focus this entire year is on literacy. We need to make sure that our professional learning is relevant for as many different groups in our system as possible. It can't be a one-size-fits-all. So that only comes with collaboration with directors, supervisors, and people in the system to say, what is the learning that is most relevant to your people's role? Staff growth and evaluations can be tied to strategic priorities. And then anytime we get a chance to model best practice, those best practices that I was just talking about, in our design of learning for our principals, for our teachers, for all of our roles in our district, it's really important to model those best practices. So I think next what I'd like to do is just do a high-level overview of some of the days and the different events that we have, and then do a deeper dive and talk a little bit about the experiences themselves. So we have, first of all, if we can go back one slide, we have a, we're going to go through this chronologically, we have a tech camp coming up. And I'll get in more depth about that in a moment. Really inspired by the number of Sowashko staff members that are engaging in that event. And really, it's aimed at curriculum writing and collaboration around tech integration and doing it in meaningful ways, not just that flashy way, but ways it's going to move the needle in terms of student achievement. And then August 17th, we have our SIP retreat. I'll get into that momentarily. It's when our teams come together to work on our school improvement plans. Now we have a strategic plan and strategic priorities to craft that plan around. That's really exciting. The 21st to the 24th, we have probationary academy. That's when all of our new staff, new to Sowashko, and like year-one teachers are coming in, as well as experienced teachers that we call three-plus, because they have one year until they're tenured in our district. And then our second and third-year probationary teachers. And so we have a task of differentiating that to make sure it's relevant for all those different staff members, and I'll get into that in a second. And then, of course, we have our workshop week, when we have a blend of site professional development and also district professional development that we offer. Little deeper dive on the probationary academy, just to show you some intentional pieces behind it. So I've already mentioned the difference between a new probationary teacher and new to us, three-plus and P1. New this year, we're going to have all of our instructional coaches present at the probationary academy, which will be really, really rich in terms of building those relationships with our second and third-year probationary teachers, because this year, new, they will all be going through a coaching cycle that's required as part of being a probationary second and third-year teacher. So we want to really foster those relationships with our instructional coaches in that space deliberately. Also, day four, we're really excited, we're going to have student voice incorporated in the professional learning as we talk about the importance of knowing our students and relationships being first. And then the last point that I would make is, we know that in 24, 25, we'll be using Charlotte Danielson's revised rubrics, and we thought, what is a really thoughtful and intentional way that we can get that into the system this year? We can start probationary academy. So all of our sessions have been thoughtfully designed in alignment with the new revised rubrics before we really roll that out for 24, 25 adoption. Tech camp, I would highlight, Ken Shelton is a national and international keynote speaker. Most recently, he headlined a lot of work in the ISTI conference. He will do a number of things while he's with us. He'll have a keynote, he'll work, he'll teach. He's a teacher at heart. He'll lead two different sessions for our staff. He'll work with administrators to really unpack, how can I, as a principal, be a digital leader in my building and see tech integration really come to fruition? And then he'll also work with our executive cabinet and our directors in thinking about our strategic plan and how to bring that to life and go back from boardroom to classroom. Just some key numbers that really inspire me. Forty teachers, instructional coaches, tech coach facilitators. Those are forty different leaders that have stepped into the space to lead their peers, which, as you know, isn't the easiest thing to do sometimes. It's easier sometimes to be in front of 25 or 26 young people than it is your colleagues. Three hundred and forty-five registered participants. Last year, we thought the number was high. Coming out of the pandemic, we were 250, and we actually anticipated being around that same number. So I'm just inspired by our district, the spirit of our teachers, and the learning community that we have. And then there are over eighty individual sessions that teachers will be attending. Little bit more on the SIP. And for this, I would actually maybe fast forward to the next slide, if you don't mind, Sean. Want to talk a little bit about in 21, 22, and then 22, 23, our school improvement plan. I like to call it the gears within each site that really make our goals come to life. In this case, our goals are going to be anchored in our new strategic priorities. It gives us a really nice compass. If you look on the left, there is some great work being done at sites around personalized learning, student climate and culture, adult climate and culture. But rest assured, all of those pieces, those themes will continue because they show themselves through our new strategic priorities. What is different in this particular SIP plan is we've gone from creating three goals to five goals, so they align with the strategic priorities. And we've been doing learning all summer with principals, various different times, to prepare them and prime them as leaders of their SIP teams at their sites, to make sure that they have literacy and confidence going in to lead that team on September, sorry. The work begins before that, August 17th. A little glimpse at the district PD day on August 29th. First of all, we have the Welcome Back, which was my first experience being in Sowashko last summer, and that was inspiring. I felt high energy coming out of that event. So Superintendent Nielsen will lead us again at Park High School this year. And then we get right into some district elementary and secondary PD. And embedded in that time, we feel like it's really important to have our assurance of compliance and annual trainings, giving time for staff to get as high of completion rate as possible on that date. They need to get that in by the start of school, but we're trying to embed it and send a value statement that these pieces are important to take care of ahead of the school How do we know how we're doing, I think is a really important question to ask ourselves. We have the Advisory Staff Development Committee meetings. This year, we already have those meetings on the schedule. One of our school board members sits on that committee and a number of other people. So we have, every site has an ATPPS lead that sits on there, so we have twenty-four teachers that are a part of it. We have union representation and just a really nice cross-section, parents, I'm sorry, as well, a nice cross-section to evaluate our professional learning. We, of course, look at staff surveys, principals, and the site leadership, and then our instructional coaches. We have twenty-four incredibly talented instructional coaches that are the eyes and ears and the ground in our sites, and we make sure that we're listening to instructional coaches as well. The last piece I would focus on before I open up for any questions, we have two more professional development days, district days, once we get schools launched. And just one piece I would say here, the anticipated focus at both levels will be literacy, because literacy is not just an early childhood elementary piece. We can focus on disciplinary literacy at the secondary level. We can teach reading skills in the various content areas. And you go back to that rowing the boat analogy, when we're focused on literacy from an E, early childhood, K-12 perspective, that's when we can get lots of momentum and hopefully improve those scores. And with that, I would open up to any questions you might have.
I had a question. Thank you. One of the questions I had around literacy is you had mentioned that having this sort of pre-K through 12 focus on literacy should increase our literacy scores. What kind of timing typically have we seen, like in other districts or other organizations that have done this? You know, is this like a one-year, five-year? You know, how long does it take for us to see the results that we are looking for?
It's a very valid question. And well, it's an answer that I don't have tonight. To point to necessarily a model district in terms of the pacing and the student achievement, that is something that I can do some research and get back to this group on, if you would like.
Yeah, I'm just curious to know, like, is this, you know, as we move into future years, presumably, we're going to need to expand PD beyond literacy? And so, you know, is this the kind of thing where this is always going to be, you know, kind of a pillar, and then we, things get added on, that kind of thing? Or maybe, Kelly, you've answered?
No, I was just going to jump in. You know, I think in general, there would probably be a, you know, that three to five years type of thing. There are so many factors that go into literacy, though. And I think one of the biggest ones is that we also just adopted a new curriculum. And so you oftentimes see an implementation dip as well, as teachers transition, as kids, you know. So we'd love to say, you know, three to five years. I think the legislation and everything that's coming down and all the supports that we are putting in place are really going to accelerate that three-to-five-year timeline. And I also think we still don't know what the pandemic did to kids and learning. And so there's just a lot of factors, but I'd love to tell you, next year, we're going to be at that eighty percent for each group. But I am really hopeful with this intentional focus and the legislative pieces and the supports we've put in place and our, you know, the new curriculums that we're looking at, and secondary and those in special ed has done a lot with literacy as well. So I would anticipate, you know, three to five years, we would be hoping to see some upward trends in our data.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mark, when you talked about assurance of compliance, I think for board members and anybody watching, can you just talk a little bit about what that includes? It was ninety minutes kind of on individual time. What components are in the assurance of compliance that we ask all staff to go through?
Sure. Thank you. So I'm just going to go here. We have been, so we have Sowashko Safety and Security that we're reviewing with staff. We have seizure awareness, bloodborne pathogens, mandated reporting, and suicide awareness, as well as FERPA, and talking about the Privacy Act. Yes.
Does all that get covered in ninety minutes? Or is that like, you just have ninety minutes, and then there's, you should have been doing...
No, that's a great question. So it's actually a suite of videos that our staff watch, and then they sign off on the fact that they have read and understood and watched the videos. We actually are working within the next twenty-four hours here of being able to finalize a platform that'll house all of that, so our analytics and our reporting, to make sure that our staff have done that. It'll be really high in terms of reliability factor, but it is videos, probably ten to fifteen minutes each. Yeah. Does that help answer that question?
Yeah.
Thank you for that question, Superintendent Nielsen.
Any more questions? Are you ready? Are you going to present some more?
No, I think that's it.
Waiting to answer some more questions, aren't you, Mark?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Oh, thank you for coming. I understand the FERPA thing. A lot of institutions are now really insisting. In fact, we just had a training online, and then you have to take a test that I failed.
There was a retake policy. There was a retake policy.
I took it twice, and I was glowing the second time. Questions? Okay. But anyway, FERPA is really on the minds of everybody. But I look forward to seeing what you're going to bring through next. You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Moving right along, we're at 5.0 information items, and we'll begin with 5.1, and that is our capital projects levy, and that will be presented this evening by our superintendent, Julie Nielsen.
I was told from this point on, as we reviewed the board agenda at Executive Cabinet, from this point on, it's my show. So here we go. All right. Capital projects. At our last board meeting, during the actual business meeting, Dan shared the presentation on capital projects. Before we move forward with the consideration of ballot language, I'd like the board to engage together in conversation around where people are at in terms of thinking, do we want to entertain having a question on the November 7th ballot? As was shared with you when Dan presented, in 2017, we moved from two million, we moved from one million to $2 million for capital projects. That was 2017. In 2021, we again asked the voters for additional dollars for that same levy, and it was not approved by about seventy to seventy-one votes, and that was 2021. That technology need has not gone away. We continue to not have a dedicated source for technology, which means we utilize general fund dollars, which are also utilized for a number of other things. And so what a capital projects levy allows us to do is to have a dedicated funding for technology needs. And I think the first thing, anytime we say technology, people think devices. I would say the lowest priority right now are the devices. You probably have seen in the news, we have students fixing our devices. Devices are certainly one thing, but the bigger areas really are securing our systems, the cyber attacks, the firewalls, the software, the networking, everything behind the scenes. And so when our Citizens Finance Committee met, they talked about the emphasis that our community asked in terms of safety and security, and those were the highest priorities for our district. And we believe strongly that a capital projects levy would give us that safety and security as it relates to the use of technology. It would also include the cameras, updating cameras, and we know how important cameras and safety is as it relates to being able to view outside our schools as well as inside. And so I'd like the board to have a conversation. You may have seen Rochester Public Schools, which typically they do not, they have not had a capital projects levy. They had a cyber attack on their system, and they now are going out on November 7th for a $10 million capital projects levy. Keeping in mind that Rochester Public Schools is a smaller district than South Washington County Schools, what we would be asking for is to go from approximately 2.8 million to 5 million. When Ellers did the estimate, they estimated around $3. In the next couple of weeks before we get to the next board meeting, Dan will be going back to Ellers to secure the funding and really how much that actual cost is for the two questions that are already approved, as well as the updated amount for this capital projects levy. When we look across six other school districts from Moiseta, Minneapolis, Robbinsdale, Osseo, and of course, our neighbors in Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan, South Washington County Schools right now levies for $137. That range goes all the way from $705, and that's just those school districts. We know there are other school districts that are levying a lot more dollars for technology than South Washington does. So with that, I would just ask the board to give Executive Cabinet some idea of where you're at. Again, the strong recommendation from Citizens Finance, I know that Louise and Simi can speak to that, they were both in attendance at that meeting as well. I'm going to be quiet and let board members talk so that we can decide how we move forward.
So Louise and I were at CFAC in June, correct? Hasn't we talked about this? Yes. Oh, yeah. That's right. Oh, yeah, that's right, in April, right. Yeah, we've been talking about this on CFAC for a long time, and I think one of the things that people should understand about CFAC is that, I mean, not here, but out there, is that CFAC looks at things with kind of a different lens. They are really concerned about the efficiency of spend and with the effectiveness of spend. And so they aren't necessarily looking for the cheapest thing to do, they're always looking for what is the most effective way to deploy our dollars, right? And so one of the things that has come up repeatedly at CFAC is that, right now, we are exposed relative to what we could be at because of how we don't have dedicated funding for some of these things, right? And when you look at, you know, Rochester was hit by a cyber attack, I think Minneapolis was hit by a cyber attack. So these are, you know, peer districts of ours, right? I think the city of Cottage Grove had a phishing attack that cost them money. So this is not something like, we're not more, we're not more special than they are, right? We're just as susceptible to these types of things, and we are an attractive target because we are a large district with a lot of money and a lot of data that would be valuable for people who don't want to do good things. And so I think CFAC was really concerned that we don't, we aren't setting ourselves up for long-term success by not having appropriate funding to put the measures in place that we need in order to prevent the attacks that have happened in Minneapolis and in Rochester from coming here. And we've all seen the phishing attacks, like, how many emails do we get about free pianos, right? Like, right? Just call this number. And so there, so even though our technology staff does a really great job stopping a lot of those, you know, we still get stuff filtering through. And so I think for them, they were really concerned, and Louise, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they were really concerned that we were, that we needed to invest more in this area. And then, of course, the concern is that as you invest more in this area, then you have to spend, the money has to come from somewhere, right? So if you're going to take money from the general fund, then what are we going to, what would we have to cut from the general fund in order to accomplish this increased technology spending? And again, like, this is like the switches and wires and the, you know, the cameras for buses and all of that kind of stuff that I think people generally have been pretty approving of in the community, but don't necessarily think of when they think of technology.
Louise, do you have something to add?
Yeah. The only thing I would add is, you mentioned that this comes from general fund now, so there was a lot of emphasis on the idea, a dedicated funding source so that it exists not just now, but not in competition with anything in the general fund, and so it exists into the future as well.
And so by decoupling it from the general fund, we will always have this dedicated stream so that, you know, as issues arise, we aren't having to take from whatever, snowplow money or the Excel bill or whatever it is in order to cover this cost, because those bills are still going to happen, right? People still need to be paid, people, you know. And so how is it that we can sort of achieve both our educational goals by keeping the general fund as robust as we can, and also our obligation to safeguard the data and the security of our children?
Anybody else have anything? Pat?
I understand the need for the safety and the money and that, but I also know that through my experience as a principal and as a teacher, that technology can enhance learning, and it can accelerate learning, and it can motivate children to learn. So those are three things that will help us with our strategic plan of literacy this year, and there are things that students enjoy, using computers, and if you kind of have a carrot to give them to, like, for example, basic math facts. Nobody wants to learn those. They don't want to do worksheets, but if you play, put it in a game, they'll do it, and they'll learn it very quickly. So that's just one example. So I'm totally in favor of putting more money into technology and training as well in technology.
Melinda?
Yes, I'm totally in favor as well. Excuse me. They, I mean, our whole system relies on technology, and I think it's important to keep our capital fund robust as well. And when we did our whole survey, security was the number one thing that came out from the whole community and from the teachers as well, and I see this as part of security. You know, making sure that our system isn't getting broken into is a huge thing, or, you know, our whole system will, the kids and everything will be affected if that happens, like happened in Rochester. So I think it is important to look at that capital levy.
Okay. Well, it looks like we have support. I'm, you know, I'm in support of it, especially the security at our buildings. In today's world, it's better to be on the safe side than be worried about what happened, has happened. So I am, and technology. If information is, gets out in the public about our students, what does that do? And our credibility. So I am, I'm really in favor. So our other board members... So our other two board members, Julie, I'll put that on you to find out their thoughts, but it looks like the majority has it right here, so.
I think we also have to remember how much staff information we keep. While student data is everywhere, and we need to make sure we secure that, we also, if we looked over in these departments between finance and payroll, we hold on to social security numbers, everything having to do with life insurance, health insurance. And I think we want to make sure that we are protected in all of those areas as well. And I think we have one of the strongest technology teams in the state, but it doesn't mean that we could not be attacked by something, so.
Julie, I did have one question. The, so Rochester got hit, and now they're going out asking for $10 million. And obviously, I would rather get, I would rather not get hit, right? So I'd rather go out for the money and prevent getting hit. But is the $5 million that we're budgeting the right amount?
I think from what Dan shared in the last presentation, that that, that covers most of it. Yep, that he felt like that was a good line, $5 million.
And Julie?
Go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about around how much that would be per household a month?
Yeah, I think what Dan shared, as I went back to the last presentation, and again, we know we'll update numbers, but because a bond is the 30 years funded differently, a capital projects, it would be about $3 or less. So at that point, it was $3. Dan's thinking it would be a little less based on any additional new homes. So $3 for the median valued home. So for board, the next meeting, we will be approving the question or the language for the questions that will be on the ballot. And what we will do is we will bring forth a proposal at this point, based on what the board members have said, to approve a capital projects levy. And then on the agenda, you will also see the language that would be on the ballot for that question. And should the capital projects levy not move forward with enough votes, then we would just need to go and take that resolution off as it relates to the ballot language. Dana, does that sound accurate? Thank you.
Okay, Julie, since this is your show, 5.2.
That's right. I'll just keep rolling. So the next one, we are in full campaign mode. Well, no, we're not. Let me just back up. We are here in the district office in full campaign mode because we know there's a lot of things that go into play right now. But what I will say that as we think about November 7th, there should be nothing that overshadows the start of the school year. And if you recall, last year in August, when we had the bond and we were not successful, there was nothing that stopped us from stepping onto the track with all of our staff members and when the kids arrived and making sure that it was the best start to a school year ever. And so we are assuring families and our students that our focus is to get the school year started. And then we're going to shift our attention and some of our time and energy to the informational campaign. In the presentation, what you'll see, just high level, board members, you're aware, but what has been approved are two questions. That first question addresses the secured entrances at schools that need them. We actually had Executive Cabinet talked about that word, "need them." And so we're cleaning up language as we go out. It's important to note that all of our schools have secured entryways. It's the level of security and where people are entering into. So when we say "need them," what we're saying is that access so they enter into an office and not into hallways. Along with the additions at Altman Middle School and Eastridge High School, and then the planned, or excuse me, the planned additions, and then the renovations at Park and Woodbury High School, that question one was our highest priority. Question two addresses space at the elementary schools projected to exceed capacity. Remember, that was more of a question our community said that they wanted us to say when it came to extensive boundary changes. We know that elementary capacity across the district, that we do have enough space, but it is for those schools projected to exceed capacity, as well as those bathrooms that keep coming up. The bathroom renovations at the five elementary schools in our 1960s schools. So those are the two questions. That is not the exact ballot language. What is the focus for our informational campaign? It's to ensure residents of the school district that, to ensure that they're informed when they go to the polls, including an understanding of what's on the ballot and the results. Should the question pass, or should it be voted down? And part of that, you'll hear next meeting, we'll be talking about the attendance boundaries. Should that question two be voted down and extensive boundaries need to occur at the elementary level, we will actually be sharing that. So we want to make sure upfront, if it's successful, this is what happens. If it's not successful, this is what happens. But ultimately, it's the school district's job to make sure that everyone and anyone who wants to listen, who wants to sign up for a presentation, who wants to come to a meeting has the opportunity to hear the information and go to the polls and vote. How will information be shared? Dana has been working hard already on signing external groups as well as some of our internal groups. External groups include making sure that our chambers, our rotaries, our athletic associations. There's a whole host. I want to say there's probably 20 to 30 different individual groups that we go out and give informational presentations to. We will have a district newsletter mailed to all residents in August. Again, August, the focus is going to be more on back to school and celebrating that. There will be much more information included in that October mailing. And if you recall, Sean's team, our communications team, was intentional after the unsuccessful bond when residents said they had no idea. So these are the district newsletters that go out to everyone, not just families in the school district. We will also have our robust district website with the backslash facility planning. School and department leaders will be provided with professional development to move the information forward. We want to make sure that our own staff within our system have all of the information so that when people have questions, they're able to also help with responses. Those will be called our bonds for buildings teams. We will have scheduled meetings with the members of our district parent advisory team. One of the great thing with 10 different advisory teams is that we have a vast number of different perspectives that when they come together and hear the information, then they also serve as key communicators out in our district. And then finally, weekly communication to all staff and families with students who are enrolled in our schools. So what we're really trying to do is make sure that in our information sharing, that it's a balance of making sure we touch on and communicate with those people who have students in our district, as well as those who are residents within our communities. This just gives a high-level overview of what the timeline looks like. You can see tonight, August 3rd, we're providing an update on the informational campaign. August 8th, and this is our working timeline, but you'll see August 8th at our executive cabinet. That is when Executive Cabinet will review the elementary attendance boundary plan. We like to make sure that we always vet it through various groups, so that plan will go through our executive cabinet. On August 17th, you will see that Dan and our Dan will be sharing the boundary change recommendations. August 21st, our So Wash Co-Connect newsletter will be mailed to all residents. August 25th is the last day to give notice of our general election and special election to Washington County and our MD Commissioner. And why did I go back to August 7th there? Oh, oh, August 7th, it's out of order a little bit here. August 7th, we will be doing the overview of expectations to system leaders, so they will get to see that. August 29th, we will have our Welcome to a New School Year Staff Event. The informational campaign will be mentioned, but we will not go in depth. It's not the appropriate time to be talking about our informational campaign. And then September 7th, we will have another board meeting. And then finally, we already have it out, voting options, early in-person, Friday, September 22nd. That is going to come so quickly. By the time we get the students in the school, it's already going to be voting in, early in-person voting. Mail-in ballots, you'll see minvotes.org or by calling. That phone number, regular polling locations are open from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on November 7th. And if anyone needs to find their polling location, again, it's minvotes.org. And there is our, going to be our robust landing page for everything facilities. As we do the informational campaign, we also are not going to spend a lot of time rehearsing and going back over the process. I think the board, as you've shared, and now you're smiling, you could give the presentation. And so the purpose is really to share the information about the questions, what it means for the students and what it means for South Washington County Schools, not to go back and extensively talk about the process. So just know that will be our focus as part of the informational campaign. Are there any questions or any things that board members would like to see in addition?
Is there, would there be, I realize I don't actually remember the answer to this question. Would there be anticipated boundary shifts if question one failed?
I think that there is the potential for boundary shifts. But one thing we have to, have to ask ourselves, if question one fails, how long before we would go back out? And then what would we do in the interim? Do we need to relook at how we deliver curriculum? Because that is such a strong need and the highest priority. We would really have to judge. Right now, if I recall from our conversations, right now, we're not looking that there would be boundary changes immediately. I think we would pause and come back in another year. Again, we would have updated numbers and demographic information as well.
Any question? Any other questions? Okay, 5.3, first reading of policy changes.
Thank you. It's that time of the school year, and I think what has exaggerated it even more is a lot of legislative updates with policies. And so I'm going to spend a little time, since I have 20 minutes. I said it's going to be an hour meeting, so team, I want to make sure I use all the minutes. Here we go. 104 is our school district mission statement. Obviously, board members and community members, you know that the mission of South Washington County Schools has been revised to educate students for success. So you will see that that policy has been updated. 418, drug-free workplace in school. That particular policy reflects changes in statute to marijuana legalization. Policy 419, tobacco-free environment. That policy adds loose tobacco and tribal ritual exception, and that was part of legislation. Policy 424, licensure status. Changes were made to the required reporting. 506, student discipline. There were substantial changes regarding non-exclusionary disciplinary practices, which means that before students are suspended, we have to make sure that there are non-exclusionary disciplinary practices that are put in place. And it also defines reasonable force, so that was an addition. 507, corporal punishment. Changes made pursuant to Minnesota Chapter 609 and the prone restraint prohibition. So again, that was part of legislation. Let me hop ahead here. That was seven. 509, enrollment of non-resident students. Changes were made pursuant to 18, paragraph 2, to the application provisions. And again, that was a legislative mandate. 510.3, athletic and activity fees. If you recall, that was the policy I brought forward last week, and so that's just adding a fee for fall dance line and competitive cheer. Then we move into 513, student acceleration, retention, and program design. It adds gifted and talented provisions and early admission details. 514, bullying prohibition. Changes were made pursuant to Minnesota Statute 121A0312. And specifically, it includes part of the legislation around malicious and sadistic conduct and sexual exploitation. 516.5, overdose medication. This is a brand-new policy, and that is part of the opioid as well as making sure that we have Narcan in all of our sites. And that actually, the Narcan being in all of our sites started July 1. And so that is actually, and our licensed school nurse was actually onsite talking with our administrators this week. 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams. Changes were made according to a state statute. 601, school district curriculum. Changes were made, again, due to a state statute. I want to make sure. I don't think there were any other changes in that one. Policy 603, curriculum development. Updates to district advisory provisions and a delete curriculum development process. In that policy, I forget which individual around the table reviewed that, but we'll want to hop back to Roman numeral 5, school site teams. It talks about the school site team advising the board. And so we'll just want to take a look back at that. I have that note from a conversation earlier with Louise before we bring that back. School district system accountability. Updates regarding the commissioner reports, graduation standards, and read well by third grade. 709, I just want to make sure there wasn't anything in there. 709, student transportation safety. Add safety training and updates rules on the school bus. And as I reviewed that again with Louise, we know we have a policy committee, and Louise isn't on that policy committee. We, I'm going to say "we," she wondered, but I wondered too. Why do we have bus rules in here? And then, they're written ever so kindly. Louise was like, "Please remain seated, please eat and drink before getting on the bus." I said, "We are nice policy writers." So Louise, thank you. We have, yeah. I was like, "That is really a nice policy. Please do not throw objects." How about do not throw objects on the school bus? So I think that was Dan, so he'll need to take a look at that. And also, our conversation, Louise, was just about making sure that we don't have procedures and protocols and probably not rules in policy language.
We did talk about that at the policy committee, too.
Okay. You like the "please"? And 721, excuse me, point four, negative meal charge. Updates to the title and to reflect no charges for meals. And board members are aware that there will be no charge for a reimbursable breakfast and a reimbursable lunch. And so with that, that is the large number of policies that are coming forward this month. Any questions?
We had a period where the public could sign up for comments on the policies only. Dana, did anyone sign up? Okay, thank you. Moving right along. We are now at 6.0, reports and comments. We will start with our superintendent. You, you're just on a roll, aren't you?
I'm on a roll, but here goes. I'm going to make it quick. First, I would like to just say thank you and a highlight to our Human Resources Department. Abby Baker and her entire team held one of the most fantastic hiring events that I've ever seen held in South Washington County Schools. Well organized. The only thing we were missing were the sandwich boards out, right out here on Point Douglas. But outside of that, we had 80-plus individuals who entered, some that were registered, some that just walked in. And on that particular day, we extended over 30 conditional job offers to individuals. I believe if I have the number correct, eight of those were for nutrition services, which is fabulous. And what really, a couple of things. What made that event so wonderful was to watch a team of leaders, Human Resources Department, work together. Really, everybody was having, having fun. It was just so organized. But then the outcome of having unconditional off, job offers made was even better. So thank you to Abby and her team. Well done. They're already talking about how do we continue this? And I believe I sent to the board the clip from KSTP, excuse me. They kind of focused on our bus drivers, which we really need bus drivers. But it was really a hiring event for everyone. The cameraman who came from KSTP, he did go to school, I believe, with Kelly's brother. We knew him, and we tried to recruit him. We told him we could pay him more than KSTP, but he didn't take us up on the, the transportation offer. I also want to do a quick shout-out to our summer schoolie event. Summer goes on, and sometimes if people are in their own summer world, they don't realize there's a lot of activities happening after school. So we have Royal Oaks Pullman, Armstrong, and Newport. Where our community education and our schoolie bus all go out onsite. They have books available, arts and crafts, they have free food. And when I say free food, it's apples and cucumbers and things that families can take, but they always serve a meal to any family that comes. And really, it's just a nice way to unite the community. And so I was to Royal Oaks this week, and I think it was a walking taco. I sat down and chatted with a lot of families, and the great thing is they were able to ask questions. So they were talking about free breakfast and lunch, and is that true? Is that really what it means? And so it's fun to be out there, but a shout-out to our summer schoolie crew. And then finally, as we enter the month of August, we have a number of our community parades. We will start August 13th with our new, celebrating Newport. August 19th, St. Paul Park. And we will round out our parade times, August 20th with Woodbury. And I think Mark covered the other things in terms of new teachers. And then our all-staff welcome back will be August 29th, and I believe board members have all received that invite.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will take school board member reports, and we'll begin with Melinda.
Okay, since the last board meeting, I've just had two committee meetings. So policy review, which Julie already covered in full. And then the 916 board that I'm on, we had a meeting yesterday. We had early strategic planning meeting where we were kind of the first batch of people to work, the school board was, to work on looking at what the needs are going to be in the next couple of years to make sure that those are prioritized in the strategic plan and go along with what the cabinet and the teachers feel the needs as well. We also had a legislative update from Valerie Doslin and discussed the new mandates and how those would affect the intermediate districts as well. And some good news, just like Julie was talking about with Abby, with the hiring. This impacts us since we use the intermediate district. the intermediate district quite a bit. So they were having hiring events, hosting multiple hiring events that had pop-up interviews. And because of those, success of those hiring events, there are now only five teacher openings. So hopefully those get filled by the year. And then the student-built home, I unfortunately was not able to get to that this year, but I do have some pictures that were sent to me. So if anyone is interested in seeing those, it's just remarkable what those students do from Career and Tech. There's a certain class that they take, and they're involved in that whole semester or year, actually, of building that home. So, and it's just amazing. They built a home out in North St. Paul this year, and I believe it's appraised at in the mid $400,000s right now.
Wow. Thank you, Melinda. Pat?
Okay, just finishing my little report. Okay, so I missed the meeting for, sorry. Missed the meeting for Bright, for Metro EXO, but I read the minutes and I'm going to report on that a little bit. Metro EXO, I couldn't tell you last time what they were changed to, but I can tell you now, it's Brightworks. And their site is www.brightworksmn.org. And on there, you'll see a lot of information about their focus on literacy and all of the professional development they have for teachers throughout the state. And some of it's online, so it's very convenient for teachers who don't have to spend a whole day away from school to attend a training. They can do it an hour at a time, maybe after school or before, or on the weekend, or on a, a snow day, they can knock a whole one out. But they also get credits for their relicensure. So like, this one was, that I looked at particularly because it was about cultural awareness. And that one was $99 for a teacher, and they got eight credits for, and I thought, they're doing great things. They're listening to the districts about what their needs are and their, the people they've hired have been, I looked at one literacy lesson, and it was very good. So I thought, and it's the kind of reading that we are going to be doing this year. So that's kind of cool. No other things, except I did get in a car accident on the way home last time I was at a board meeting, so.
Pat? I'm limited to your driving.
Nobody was hurt, but $4,500.
Oh, gosh. Okay, Louise, okay.
My committees have been quiet this last month, so I'm, I'm okay with that. It's been a long month. But I did want to comment on the school safety day that was held by the, the district. I sat for the keynote, was absolutely fantastic. And looking at the agenda, it looked like the rest of the day was as well.
Thank you. Sim?
Sure. Well, you heard what I had to say about CFAC and the policy committee Julie covered. The only other committee that I had that has met since our last board meeting was the city of Woodbury Committee. And there, they talked primarily about kind of the growth that they're seeing in the city and some growth management initiatives they're looking at.
Okay. Eric and Katie are not here, and I haven't been to one, so that limits that. All righty, moving right along. 7.0, our future meeting dates. We have a school board business meeting on August 17th, 2023, and a workshop board meeting on September the 7th, 2023. Both of these meetings will be held at the district service center at 6:00 p.m. With that, it's 8.0, and we are adjourned.